This workshop to order. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
None here.
Mr. Boyce?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next is projects. Available services. And Umet needs of senior citizens and individuals with physical disabilities, Commissioner Gold.
Uh, that's unmet needs.
Unmet, I'm sorry.
Uh, we've got a couple of people here to present if they could come on in. First of all, we've got Mary Rowe, who has her Masters of Social Work, and worked with people with developmental disabilities as a licensed psychiatric technician. She has provided hands-on help to and advocated for senior citizens and people with physical disabilities who were experiencing homelessness. Mary is also a senior citizen who is physically disabled. Mary, you're up.
She's in the ladies' room. You can introduce other people while we're doing that.
Okay, we've got Tina Craig. She's right there. She's an in-home coordinator for the area agency on aging in Curry County, and she also has a disabled child, I hear. So, she's got some experience in that area. Then we've got Emma Durak, who has a BA in gerontology. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's for old folks like me. The study of aging in Curry County. And she has also worked as a transition diversion coordinator at Aging and People with Disabilities in the Oregon Department of Human Services. She's presently the office manager at Bay Area Enterprise and helps disabled people find employment. So how successful are you on that?
Well, in the last...
Can't do that.
Oh, we can't. Good. Does someone want to go get Mary? It's probably we're waiting on her. She's in the restroom, I believe. Mary, you're up.
By the way, since we're filming time here, if you've got something on aging, stop the aging process, let me know, I'm up for it. No, I don't think so, pal. I look in the mirror and go, oof.
You are getting grayer, aren't you?
I can blame that on, um... My wife, I'll blame my wife.
Why not?
Scooter.
Oh dear.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you now. I know where to get them.
Wow. That's beautiful, thank you so much. I am Mary Rowe. I requested that this topic of services for and unmet needs of senior citizens and people experiencing disabilities be presented at this workshop, because I have noticed a lack of awareness about these two groups' needs. By increasing our understanding about the life challenges of these two groups of Curry residents, and becoming aware of how our county government can and/or should address their needs when making policy decisions, we can ensure healthier and more meaningful lives for our elders and residents who are experiencing disabilities. And speaking of this topic, I am drawing upon my experiences as a former licensed psychiatric technician, utilizing my expertise as an MSW, sharing experiences from when I provided hands-on helping to senior citizens and people experiencing disabilities who were also experiencing homelessness, as well as drawing upon my own experiences as a senior citizen and a person experiencing a disability. Wish I'd brought one of those things to make pages easier. Can't look at when you've got the COVID. Nutrition. South Coast Business or SCAB oversees Meals on Wheels in Curry County, and they do so through Tina Craig of Area on Aging, who will speak later about this service. During the COVID virus restrictions, most meals are delivered frozen with the amount reduced. Some senior citizens would like to have a vegetarian or partially vegetarian, um, uh, I'm sorry. Or partially vegetarian alternative, and I will try to advocate for that. According to the Oregon Food Bank, we in Curry County can participate in the seniors commodities program if South Coast Food Share chooses to do so, and we let them know that we would like to participate. I believe that there is a need to deliver one food box a month to some senior citizens and people with physical disabilities. Our community is currently delivering food to schoolchildren during the COVID restrictions, but not to seniors and people who are experiencing disabilities who are at serious risk. I have tried to find an organization that could do this. Such an ongoing effort would be too much for coastline neighbors. This is an unmet need. There are some stores, of course, that deliver groceries, but a considerable percentage of our seniors do not have or cannot use computers and/or smartphones, nor have an email address. And this is also true for some people who are experiencing a disability. Animal companions. Pets often have a special role in the lives of elders and people who are experiencing disabilities. Animals often serve as service animals or medically certified assistance animals. When a companion or assistance animal dies, it can be especially hard on an elder, because the elder may realize that they are then too old to have another pet. A problem for senior citizens and persons experiencing disabilities who have low incomes is the cost of veterinarian care for animal companions and medically certified assistance animals who have become seriously ill, including trying to save their lives. I thus recommend that a nonprofit organization secure and distribute funds to senior citizens and people who are experiencing disabilities for their seriously ill animals. Transportation. One of the biggest challenges for elders and people who are experiencing disabilities is transportation. I gave you a Curry Public Transit or CPT bus schedule. That is for transit runs up and down the coast between Smith River and North Bend, and is also for dial-a-ride rides within Brookings Harbor and Gold Beach. Rider is 60 years of age and older, and people who are experiencing disabilities can ride for half price if they show proof of their disability, such as a Medicare card. One cost-saving option is to buy a monthly pass for $50. Additionally, the Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities, gives out several single-segment bus passes to those over 60, who can receive three or four a month while the supply lasts. Getting to medical appointments is a big challenge to those of us who do not have Oregon Health Plan, which provides transportation. Port Orford still does not have Curry Public Transit Dial-a-Ride, but may next July. Also, there are not any coastline neighbor volunteers in Port Orford to take senior citizens shopping. One thing that you can do to help is to consult Curry Public Transit's schedule before scheduling meetings, so that you can be as inclusive as possible. Financial stability. The financial stability of senior citizens and people who are experiencing disabilities often depends upon each person's ability to make use of a number of programs. The first step is to receive accurate information about such programs. Unfortunately, the providing of information and referral is spotty in Curry County. I believe partially due to a lack of education on the part of a lot of our Human Services employees. For instance, a large allocation of funds for energy assistance to those at risk due to the COVID virus was advertised on Facebook by Oregon Coast Community Action, while the information was not shared with the local Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Office, so that those that receive their services could be informed. It is a common misconception by the public that senior citizens and people experiencing disabilities who receive some assistance from aging and people with disabilities all have caseworkers who can help them with various problems. Actually, most have eligibility workers, not caseworkers, and are largely left on their own to navigate the Human Services system. Senior citizens and people with disabilities who receive more funds monthly from Social Security than other recipients often end up with less, because they must pay Medicare premiums, insurance premiums, and co-pays. And because of the cost of their medical care, because they receive a little bit too much to be eligible for Oregon Health Plan, can be so high that they must find some way to partially offset the cost in order to survive, such as a housing choice voucher. For $25 a month, a relatively new nonprofit in Curry County, Coastline Neighbors, will allow senior citizens to join their program. There is a long waiting list, however. Seniors can ask for six instances of help per month in South County and Gold Beach. Volunteers then choose the requests that they wish to fulfill. There is no guarantee that all requests will be met. For those seniors who get along with people well, this could be a good program. A background check of each participating senior citizen is required, and is done by volunteers. Recently, I proposed to the Board of Kuz Curry Electric that they allow senior citizens aged 65 and older to have a percentage of their capital credits due to financial hardship on a one-time-only basis. The Kuz Curry Electric Cooperative Board voted no. I was informed by their CEO that the timing was wrong, as they currently need all of their resources for their broadband expansion. Accessibility. We only have seven centers for independent living left in Oregon to assist and advocate for people who are experiencing disabilities in the state of Oregon. We used to have South Coast Independent Living Services, or Skills, in Curry County, but they lost their funding about a decade ago. Federal funding for independent living centers started drawing up about 25 years ago. Now they must attain grants for specific purposes, and that limits what services are available. Lain Independent Living Alliance in Eugene has the only ADA center in the state of Oregon. Disabled Rights Oregon, or DRO, used to provide legal assistance for ADA violations that can no longer attain funding for that purpose. The Fair Housing Council of Oregon does not provide personalized responses anymore. We do not have a Disabled Services Advisory Board at our Curry County Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Office, as other offices throughout the state do, to work on issues of equality. And the Governor's Advocacy Office has a reputation of not caring sufficiently about incidences of discrimination to those who use state services or interact with state departments. I asked South Coast Business Employment Corporation if they would be open to helping with the funding of a new nonprofit that would advocate for those experiencing disabilities in Curry County. They seem to be open to the idea, but it would take a very committed group of people to form another nonprofit like Skills. Without a group that advocates for those experiencing physical disabilities in Curry County, during the last decade, we have lost ground and discrimination has increased. Housing. The waiting lists for low-income housing for senior citizens range from about three and a half to five and a half years. These are much longer than other waiting lists for low-income housing. So we need to prioritize more low-income housing for senior citizens and people experiencing disabilities. A decent credit rating is required to get into low-income housing, except housing that is administered by the Kuz Curry Housing Authority. Co-signers are being phased out. After a lifetime to make mistakes and partially due to medical bills, this can make getting into such housing impossible for seniors. One solution would be to follow a model used in Eugene. Applicants receive training in how to be a good tenant from an organization like St. Vincent de Paul, followed by training on how to manage their finances by organizations like the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation, or NEDCO, in Eugene. According to NEDCO, people who complete both courses have a 98% success rate as tenants. Accordingly, low-income housing units accept program graduates as tenants, despite their undesirable credit ratings. I asked NEDCO about two years ago if they would outreach to Curry County, and to my amazement, they said yes. There is an organization in Port Orford called Homeless for the Elderly, which helps senior citizens who are experiencing homelessness by selling crafts due to the vulnerability of this group. Lastly, please remember that many of your constituents who are old... I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Who are... I was being pressed for time there when I wrote this. Constituents who are senior citizens or experiencing disabilities still do not use computers or have email addresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
We've got, I believe, uh... Tina, you're up.
Well, thank you. Got it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tina Craig, and, um, I'm with Area Agency on Aging, which is actually a South Coast business, which Mary spoke about quite a bit. I'm in charge of in-home services for seniors that are over 60. My home office is in Kuz Bay, and I'm the only person that works in the Curry, or the Brookings office. But the programs that we have, I put it, they're all on this list right here. So, um, and I do handle the Meals on Wheels program. We have a contract with the Gold Beach Senior Center, and also the Senior Center in, um, Check of Activity Center in Brookings. We have about 90 people that get home-delivered meals, all together. Right now, the Gold Beach Senior Center is delivering twice a week. So, the first delivery is on Tuesday, and they get a hot meal and two frozen. And then Friday, they get a hot meal and three frozen. So, um, Brookings is doing it once a week, and they're doing all frozen right now, and breakfast items. We have Oregon Project Independence Program, which is in-home services, 20 hours, with a home care worker each, each month. Right now, I have a waiting list for that program. We also have the Family Caregiver Program. Sorry, I'm having a hard time breathing in this mask.
You know what, why don't you just take it off? Because nobody's around you, and that way we'll be able to hear you better.
Also pull the one microphone down a little bit. There you go, thanks.
Okay. Where was I? I didn't write anything down for, for this.
Doing fine.
But, um, let's see, oh, Family Caregiver... Family Caregiver Program is a program, which is a respite program. When I started working for South Coast Business, there wasn't anybody on the program. And I partnered with Coastal Home Health. So now we have about 23 people on the program. And that's just for Brookings and the Brookings area. I'm not sure how many they have in Kuz Bay. But, um, so we're finally using that program and starting to use the money for that program. So, um, it's a stipend of $1,500 a year for the person to help them take care of their loved one. So it pays for respite or supplemental services, whatever they need to make it easier for them to take care of their loved one in their home. Of course, with the nonprofits, we, uh, we need volunteers for a lot of our programs. And, um, the transportation program right now is on hold because of the virus. We have one volunteer that does, does do the transportation, but not right now. Our program's on hold. So that's really put a lot of our seniors without transportation to appointments.
Can they hook up with dial-a-ride?
Yes, they, a lot of them do.
Okay.
But for out-of-town appointments, it's pretty...
I have a question. Have you applied through the Governor's Office? I know the, you said you're 501(c)(3). A lot of that money that was supposed to have been sent, she's earmarked for 501(c)(3) service-oriented industry. Perhaps you may qualify for some of that. I didn't know if you had applied for it or not.
Right, and I'm sure that, um, South Coast Business does all of that. And I'm sure they, I'm sure they have.
Okay.
They're on top of...
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks. All right? Thank you.
Thanks so much, Tina.
Thank you.
It's hard getting up in front of people. Until she's nervous. Oh, well, thank you.
You will both be very, very missed by myself and many others.
My name is Emma Durak. I am the Outreach Office Manager for Bay Area Enterprises. We help people with disabilities, both physical and developmental, find and maintain meaningful employment within their own community. As you said earlier, I do have a degree in gerontology, which is the study of aging. But it is not simply senior work, although I have worked with seniors for many years. Aging is something we all do every day. I haven't gotten younger one day, so I think it's very important that we look at all life cycles and what's going on with each individual within that life cycle. So I have recently moved over to doing this, which has been very beneficial for myself and the community. Bay Area has been operating in Kuz Bay since the 80s, and I recently piloted the program to bring them into Curry County, and we have been very successful. So, um, in order to help people find and maintain employment, it takes a collaborative effort. There are many agencies and brokerages that all work together, from the state to nonprofits, that all help find what a person can bring to the table, what their skill set is, and what they can do to be useful in their community and find some purpose, because work is purposeful, and everyone should have the right to earn a living wage and use something that they think brings something better to the world. So we, um, we get referrals from different agencies, and we meet one-on-one with a person and help do a discovery period, find out what their skills are, what their interests are, and then go into the community and start looking at different employers and find options for working through what we could do to help find them employment. In Curry County, we are rather limited on resources. That was a big issue I had while working with the state, is that there are these amazing programs that exist in Salem, Portland, Eugene. We don't have them here. The resources don't exist here. We have to help each other succeed, which oftentimes takes a lot of out-of-the-box thinking and creativity and understanding what your position and role is and working with others to make sure we can get to that role. So, um, there's many presentation topics, but some of the ones I'd like to touch on was financial stability, specifically speaking with the disabled population. A rather disenfranchised population that historically has limited means to access work. There are specific industries, the hotel industry, restaurant industry, where, janitorial services, where people commonly find positions. And COVID has been exceptionally hard on a lot of our population that has these kinds of jobs. And when you start looking at persons suffering from developmental disabilities and things like COVID, we have run into extreme issues. The regimentation in daily life, people are losing their routines. They don't know if their job is open day-to-day or week-to-week. We have to factor in specifically what people's individual needs are. There are a lot of people who have tactile issues. They can't wear masks or have, you know, different issues that lead to needing to provide proper accommodation. And that's one of the things that my agency does upfront, is we sit down with the employer and the employee, discuss what their need is, find out what kind of accommodation would need to be made. And then we would go through all of the requirements with the employer, talk about bully regulations, EEOC, Equal Employment Opportunities Commission, ADA laws and policies, sit down and really have a conversation with them about what kind of accommodation each individual would need, and let them know that accommodations are a very strict guideline of who needs one, how they're asked for, and how you go about providing one. And we need to keep reiterating, especially with things like COVID, that requiring medical documentation and ongoing violations start getting into issues with the disability-related inquiry rule as well as undue hardship rules under ADA. So we have to be very careful to make sure that people understand what their role is and who they can ask certain things to, who they can't, and what the appropriate time for those things are to make sure we're adhering to all laws and regulations. So that's some of the things that we help figure out upfront. You know, back to our county having limited resources, there was recently an article published in the Oregonian, I believe on December 3rd, that spoke to issues in residential care facilities here in Curry County that house people with disabilities. It was very disheartening to understand what kind of conditions were being reported and that we have no other options for housing for some of these people. So work like mine and other agencies that work together are integral to make sure that we have eyes on people, that we know what condition people are in and what kind of care they're receiving, so that we can all maintain a better community together. And I think it's just very important that we all remember we're in this together, and we need to work through these issues in the best way possible that doesn't create more problems than good, because we all have enough going on right now. So that's pretty much, you know, what we try and do, and that's what I tried to bring to the community. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you ladies coming in and presenting.
Thank you very much.
It's not always easy. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to 3B, world-famous Langlois, Oregon. Commissioner Boyce? Welcome, Alan Family. I'm probably, Mr. Chair, gonna ask Counsel Huddle to help on this. I think we've been working really hard on trying to get this done for you. I mean, how many times have we been on the agenda? And understandably, it's just been some things to do with ODOT, and, um, the work you're getting done up there is just tremendous. It's the biggest thing to happen to Langlois probably in 20 years. And I know you put out a tremendous investment. Much appreciated. Welcome, David Allen. Cypress Campground and RV.
I brought my ride, it'll be 23 years this February. Angelique, so...
Welcome, Angelique.
Really quick, if I can back up for a second. I wasn't part of the presentation. I was on the board for years for the Check of Activity Center. It was amazing what they did. The kitchen would only feed the people that came in at a discount, but they would overdo the meals since we were burning the fuel and had the refrigeration. And so whatever they didn't use, they would then pack up for those Meals on Wheels program. So nobody ever showed up, and they ran out of food or anything else. So it was really pretty interesting how they coordinated that, plus the excitement with all the drivers. So, that's a good program we have in our county. I know I'm not part of the presentation, but yeah, definitely a good one.
Food never went to waste.
No, they did a great job, so... Yeah, I've kind of taken on a project up there... No, they did a great job. So, um, yeah, I've, I've kinda taken on a, a project up there trying to clean it up. Uh, we've had some challenges for sure. They keep letting people out of prison, we'll probably have more challenges because they keep coming back like salmon and spawning in the same place, or trying to. Because it was, it was a rough spot. Anyway, I know that we're trying to get giraffe out there upfront. Uh, ODOT seems amenable to it. They actually thought it was probably a good idea. They said in the past that Langlois was missing road culture, I think is the word. They actually had talked about increasing the speed limit through Langlois, um, right there in front of the library and everything else. The community came up, um, small community, but the community came up and fought it for a while, especially a couple of realtors. And they were able to push some of those speed signs out a little bit because they had crushed, crushed it down inside the, the city area, uh, or...
That was by the library is what the concern was, the library. The speed limit fifty-five in front of the library.
Yeah, and I'm almost directly across from it, just, just a hair, hair, uh, south of it.
Yeah, I remember that. Reading about it.
Anyway, we have the prehistoric gardens. We've got the safari north of us. Figured it would be a, a good theme thing. It would add a little bit of flavor to it. Uh, so we had a world-renowned ice carver that does woodwork. He actually has competed twice on the world circuit, um, over in Europe. And he won both times. But he also does woodwork and we just happen to have him as a, a professor up at the college in Coos Bay. So he teaches culinary art, uh, in addition to doing his carvings. Whatever he does, he does extreme, uh, and really well. So we commissioned him to put a eighteen-foot wooden giraffe made out of red cedar together for us. Of course, it needs to be assembled the rest of the way. But again, just something to hopefully add some flavor and, and, uh, keep the, the public with slower speed limit there. But I haven't been surprised really of where it is lately. I think that ODOT was getting the information over to John Tittle. And if you can bring us up to speed or me to speak.
And I apologize. We've, we've been keeping the pictures and the, uh, you know, the interest level up pretty well. And this time we just, being a workshop, we, I don't know, they might be up there somewhere, but...
JJ, did we ever manage to get a picture for the presentation today? It's in, the picture's in the packet? Okay.
The giraffe?
Yeah. Can it go up on this screen here so the folks can see it?
And I apologize. That's kind of my fault, JJ.
Well, he's looking. Some other things we've done, we've got a African estodo not to scale that's on the roof of the building. Uh, in addition to that, the artist thinks with those beautiful cypress trees we have out there would be a great place to put a, uh, a lion later on, if I can afford it, and some cubs, and make a lioness on the big branch up above, potentially a, a monkey hanging from it. Uh, and of course, all those would be life-size. Uh, but just another theme to bring people to Curry County and hopefully, again, help all the businesses by having that traffic here. I know that the reason that the state of Oregon, uh, was fairly interested in helping out, and I've got state troopers that are friends. One of the issues is that there's not enough campgrounds and a lot of them are multi-use, which I guess is frowned upon because if you have people that are long-term, living where they're short-term, they kind of start to act like they own it as a long-term, or it's not as comfortable. So they're looking for more short-term. In addition to that, just having the more capacity. You'll see people up and down our beautiful Highway 101, uh, that are parked on the side and they have nowhere else to go. So they're pushing their slide out and hopefully nobody hits as they drive down the road. And, and as people, sometimes when they camp, they may drink and they're walking right there on the side of the highway. So they really seem to be enthusiastic to get other spots where people can safely camp. And so that was part of my mission to, to make that happen. When I say "I," I mean, I mean "we." So, you know. The old saying, what's mine is hers and what's hers is hers. So when I say "we," I mean "her."
So there's the work.
And that's not completed. That's just, he just sat the pieces together. It needs to be done. But that's, that was just wood that he carved out. And that's Chris Foltz down below, the professor, and also, I said, the world-renowned ice sculptor.
And red cedar, no less.
Yep.
That's amazing.
So, so Commissioner Boyce mentioned this is, uh, again, not the first time we've seen this. The last time it was presented to the board, I think we actually had the two different agreements for approval. One was a agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, because I think it's their right-of-way and they wanted us to, um, have the responsibility for the installation and upkeep and maintenance of the giraffe. Or it said if we subcontract to a contractor to do it, in this case it'd be Mr. Allen, then it would have to meet their standards. So I put together a subcontract agreement with Mr. Allen, very similar to our other sub-recipient agreements. And it had terms and conditions in there. And I submitted that to Oregon Department of Transportation and they emailed me and said it would meet what they were looking at, for the protections of us and that it would pass their muster as far as, um, it would satisfy if, if the, um, terms in agreement with them of subcontracting. So really, other than that, I don't have a lot more to add. When Commissioner Boyce has been working hard on this, I mean, it's just basically what I do is work with agencies on contracts. I mean, we've seen property sale transactions and, um, you know, all other kind of things in the agenda, contracts with roof repairs, all those kind of stuff. So, um, really, I've been working on this like I work on everything else. But I don't have much more to add. The board's seen this before. I don't think they've seen the presentation, but, um, it's really up to the board whether you want to approve the two agreements.
Well, one of the things I have a question on that maybe you can clarify, Council, is the Curry County contract for work not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Is this that Curry County is going to contribute ten thousand dollars?
No, um, we would not contribute more than ten thousand dollars. But it's just a standard form agreement we use. This would just satisfy ODOT. In fact, I think we actually say we would not spend any money and that the sub-recipient would, um, spin back to us. So that's just our standard form agreement.
If that language is clear, I don't have a problem with it. But I just, I have a problem if we're going to say, well, we're gonna, we'll spend up to ten thousand for you, we're gonna have maybe thirty other people apply for new signs for the front of their property and they're all gonna want us to contribute to that.
Well, so, good, good question. So that, that is a, that is, is this a precedent, I think, is a really good question. And it could be seen to be a precedent. Now, um, the facts of this are that it's a, you know, piece of art and that we wouldn't have anything. But I, I believe Commissioner Pash, if I'm not mistaken, the contract says it's not to exceed. So this is anything from zero to ten thousand.
Right, that's what I read, is not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
And this is a zero. So if anybody else wants to come along and have a, a zero, um, then...
Did you make that really clear in the contract?
Well, let's take a look here.
If I can add, when I spoke with ODOT, they said, Roy, the intention is that they don't want to have full responsibility on anything along, on the right-of-way within counties. They want to make sure that they empower the counties and their authorities because they're seeing things, they're there all the time, to be able to have some muscle in situations.
Well, and it looked to me like the county was taking the liability. That was my...
Passed through essentially.
Yeah, so it's really...
Knowledge of ODOT has some power that you could let them come after me, but you essentially have the main power to come after me if I wasn't going to perform, but...
Right. If ODOT would come after us, we would, uh, come after Mr. Allen and his company. And it, it does say, I think we had one dollar in there just to have it around. So it's pretty clear.
You have to have consideration, I think.
How many spaces are you gonna have?
At this point, I've got thirteen. I'm working on trying to get three small cabins, because often people travel, it's again, kind of funny, the last presentation we had, they'll, they'll travel with their, their senior parents or sometimes the adult kids will, will travel with their senior parents and the grandkids. And when they're in their RV, they don't necessarily want to stay in the same tight space. So a lot of times they'll rent a cabin if there's a cabin available or, or something like that. So my goal is to add three more cabins there. In addition, if you don't mind me going on, I want to...
Go ahead, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I got a turn later.
Um, is the structure we did, attic trust is up top, which gives you a, a second story. It's about eleven hundred square feet. Uh, we've had a lot of the community come in and say, hey, can't wait for you to get open. We'd like to be able to, wedding receptions are the Humboldt Wolfers Guild, I guess. They bring their big machines. They want to go there because they've always had to go to the fire hall and they do it, I guess, twice a year. And so these...
So this building's built already?
Yes. Yeah, well, the drywall's being completed as we speak.
Okay.
So, uh, but it's a big open space. Got an ADA ramp going all the way up. That's another thing that I did. And when I say "I," in this case, I actually mean my contractor, Hal Oler, had the vision to make everything ADA. We've had somebody up there, uh, you probably know Brian Downing, or Dowink Downing, he, uh, came up, checked things out. He said, you know, you're a hundred percent ADA. Every spot is ADA. And, uh, which leads to some other potential grants that the county can get indirectly because we've got this in place. You guys tried to do that when you did the South Coast Community College. I guess you failed the great, you can't quite make it enough ADA. But my, my point is that they have a full ramp to get upstairs, make it really easy. Most times, most time handicap people or people with disabilities are stuck on the bottom floor and they don't have the option to go upstairs. They can get up, they can see the view. So we've done all kinds of things to try to really make it fit anybody specifically that wants to come.
But bottom line, we're just worried about the giraffe. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, well, right now, yeah, yeah. And it's, and again, I, I, I told them that I want to take full responsibility for it. And they said, well, our process now is we have an inter, inter...
Governmental agreement.
...agreement, in which case they can then push everything back on you if you're willing to do that. I said, of course.
Council?
Thank, thank you. Um, and again, we, we had asked to schedule for a workshop to get input from all the other departments. I checked with Rhodes. They didn't have any real concerns. Becky Crockett is here for planning. I'm not sure if she's here to speak on this issue or not. And then the ODOT people emailed me. They, you know, with COVID and stuff, we're not gonna be coming down. But they emailed and said, our sub-recipient agreement essentially with Mr. Allen and his company satisfies their conditions in their agreement with us.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, no time did you even remotely ask for any, any money, dollars? Nothing. So, and I'm verifying that because I would have, I would have known. Thank you. Also, I just want the public to know that you have, you and your family and you house a Curry County contractor, you know, which is, which is really nice and, uh, good for, for our whole, whole aspect here. He's an amazing guy. Uh, but you also cleaned up, if I can be just a little crude, a tremendous cesspool in that wonderful little community. And, uh, that was a little bit more than just rolling up your sleeves. Thank you.
The road master's comments are on the screen if you scroll down.
Oh, thank you.
He sent an email.
Very good. Thanks, JJ.
And my father was born about two hundred yards from your park. Don't hold that against me, okay?
I won't. Actually, it's been really interesting because I had, uh, I had the band and chief police, or police chief, and one of his guys roll in there, I mean, hard and fast. And, uh, so I said, how, how can I help you? And he says, and he looked around, he goes, wow, do you own this place? He said, this is where all the, this is where we used to pick up the people that were breaking into places with the drugs and everything else. We have to come down here into Curry County, because they're coups, uh, to nail them. And, uh, he thanked me for making such a big change. I've had the sheriff come by, um, or the deputies, I haven't actually had the sheriff come by. The deputies have come by, they've done the same thing. And the same with some of the state troopers. And they told me, once they open, since there's not a lot of coverage up there, they'll drive through every once in a while just to make sure their presence is, is known to, to, to help northern Curry County. So, yeah.
And the road department's comments are basically, they don't have the time or energy to do any maintenance on this and they don't want any liability. And so hence the agreement with Mr. Allen.
So Commissioner? What's your hope here?
Uh, how quickly can we send him out the door? I know we can't make a decision today, but we can, uh, send word to him that we will bring this up, what, the twenty-third and have a proper vote?
Yeah, the only way to do it today would be to amend the agenda again or take it under our last agenda item, which is, um...
Well, the order would still need to be created, is that correct?
Correct.
So we can just do it for now.
On the twenty-third. Thank you.
Can you make it one more week?
Of course.
The delays that you have had.
My only concern with this would be making sure that the language from ODOT is clear and that they have no issues with it and all that.
I can, I can get that to you before next week, Ben.
That, that's, other than that, I'm fine with it.
But they are, if I may.
Sure.
They've, they've been in tremendous support of this. They're just trying to follow their process.
I just want to make sure because it's in the right-of-way. That's all. Just making sure from a legal standpoint that we're not gonna get something brought back to us. That's all.
So to add to that, um, they went ahead and they issued me a separate permit in that same right-of-way, right in front of where the draft is, so closer to their highway, prior to this. They said, we're just gonna take care of this. They, they let me put in a chain-link fence.
Okay.
So, I mean, they, again, to kind of help keep a separation and, you know, I think it makes sense in case the campground, somebody, some kid kicks a ball, we don't want to go in the highway or them chasing after it or animals, et cetera. So, no, they've been very supportive and they issued that like immediately.
All right, so Commissioner, you'll bring this back for next week?
Yes, thank you.
For approval? Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks.
Feel free to call me if any questions.
Thank you. All right, with that, I think with nothing further, we have any public comments? Nothing further, this workshop is adjourned. We want to flip our tapes, we'll go back into our regular session.